This famous Amy's cookies.
This is different though, right? Or has it always been made with Belgian chocolate?
The size is different, but the cookies are still.
Everybody ready? You guys ready? Ready? Ready, ready.
Welcome to the February 2nd City of Oldsmar Council Work Session on Downtown Redevelopment Requests for Proposals and Process and Criteria. It is 6:00 PM. I am calling this meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Let's start the meeting with our invocation and our pledge allegiance to the flag, which will be led by our City Attorney, Tom Trask. Please rise.
Our Heavenly Father, help us to carry out the tasks necessary for us to fulfill our purpose. Help us to stay on track so that we may let this meeting work for our good and for the good of our community. Help us to be good stewards of positive change to benefit the City of Oldsmar and its residents. In this we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tom. Next item on our agenda is the Oldsmar Public Open Forum. Each speaker will be recognized once and will be limited to five minutes presentation on any subject. Please state your name and address for the record. The open forum will conclude at 6:30 PM. Is there anybody that would like to speak to the council? Well, that was easy. All right, with that, I'm going to close the public open forum. Our next item on the agenda is our discussion and our City Manager, Felicia Donnelly. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I would, I would like to introduce Laura Smith and Owen Betts from GAI Consultants, who are going to lead the, almost the remaining parts of the workshop.
Here we go.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you all again.
How are you?
Welcome back.
Thank you. So, we prepared a very short presentation to do tonight to walk through these last few items. So ideally, what we're going to talk about is the review process and scoring criteria. And then Felicia is going to talk about the development agreement and negotiation process and how that'll proceed once that we get to that stage. So, first of all, does this work? I'm wondering, I don't know. Yeah, it does. Thank you. Okay, so first of all, we're going to start our review process. So, we've kind of laid this out in steps. The intent of that is to kind of follow a sequence and give you all a sequence that you can hopefully see as a progressive process. So, first of all, obviously, the first thing that's going to happen is that proposals are going to be submitted from the individuals who respond. So, you've got the five firms that you're going to invite to respond to the RFP. So, the first thing that's going to happen is those proposals from those five firms, or however many of them choose to respond, will be submitted to the city. Staff will, you know, record all of those documents, stamp everything in. They will share those proposals with us at GAI. And at that point, the purchase price or the offer is still going to be sealed in a separate envelope. We won't see that. That will be held here for the initial stages of the review process. The next step is, within about a week or so, depending on schedules, there will be a sort of trade show style open house that's going to be held. And that's basically going to be an opportunity for folks from the public, and any of you, of course, to come and, and see what's being proposed by these developers. We're going to ask that they each prepare some sort of, you know, boards that people can see of the plan concept that is contained within their proposal. So, that will happen, like I said, with, hopefully, within approximately a week or so of when proposals are submitted to the city. The price, of course, or proposed purchase price will still remain in a sealed envelope at that point. And we are going to solicit comments back from the public. And anyone else who attends at that time as well will have comment cards. So, we're hoping to really get a good cross-section of everyone's personal preferences and thoughts on the types of proposals that are submitted at that time. The next step is going to be that GAI will review all of those proposals as well as the feedback from that open house. So, you know, before the open house even occurs, we'll have already started our review and observations of the proposals that have come in. And then, once that the open house has happened, then we'll also include that feedback in our review. And again, at that time, the purchase price or purchase offer is still going to remain confidential and sealed. It still hasn't been revealed yet. So, for step four, at that point, city staff will provide our, sorry, the proposals and our observations as we've provided back to them, to all of you, to start digesting that information. So, what this will be is essentially a, a report of observations from us on each of the proposals. We won't be doing a scoring or a ranking. We're not going to tell you, "We would do this," or "We would do that." We're simply going to identify deficiencies or issues or areas that we feel need to be addressed. We'll also identify areas that we think were, you know, particularly well responded to or where maybe the, the team that's proposed has, has a lot of experience or has really shaped that well. We'll also talk a bit in there about how the public perceived that plan in terms of the feedback that was received during the open house portion. Now, at this time, again, the purchase price is still confidential. Nobody knows what is being offered for the land price at this stage. So, that gets us up to where it's in your hands, right? So, at this point, you have the proposals, you have all of our feedback and observations on everything, and y'all will start to dive into all of those proposals. So, that takes us up to step five. So, step five is where we get into the actual special meeting of city council that's going to occur after you have had some time to digest the proposals. You'll be doing that on your own time. We'll come to this room again, I assume, and we'll have a special meeting of the city council where the respondents will be asked to prepare a presentation and engage in a Q&amp;A time period with all of you so that you can ask questions to each of the respondents to the RFP. And they'll have the opportunity to sort of present their concept in that same time period. From there, once that that presentation has occurred and you've all had time to ask questions of each of the firms, then you will do your formal scoring of each of those proposals here. Those will be read into the record. At that time, again, the price is still confidential. It's still in a sealed envelope. It hasn't been opened. Your staff doesn't know what the offer price is. We don't know, you don't know. That's where we're still at at this point. Your council scoring sheets are going to be given to staff, and they will tabulate those during the special meeting. At that time, the purchase prices, once that you've all submitted your scoring over to staff for tabulation, then the purchase prices will be opened. Those offers will be read into the record. And your staff will enter them directly into that same tabulation sheet where all of your scoring went. And that will give us then a weighted score for each of the respondents' proposals. And that will then be presented back to you as a 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 ranking based on the highest overall score. And you'll be asked at that time to approve that ranking or, you know, obviously, continue that conversation if necessary. So, at this point, I want to ask, is there any questions about where we are or the process? Because we're now down to where we move past that part, so.
Councilmember Gannon, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for outlining this, Laura. It makes it much easier to understand rather than speaking in theoretic, uh, theoretically. This helps me see more clearly each of the steps in the process. It's not so much a question, it's more of a comment that I, and I know I talked about this at length last time, so I'm not going to say all of the things again, but I am still very uncomfortable with the whole keeping the purchase price confidential in a sealed envelope. I understand it even more now than I did before, and I like it even less. Especially that during that public open house part, that the public won't get to see that. And that, that bothers me a little bit. I think that, I think it's a larger part of it. I just do. So, I just wanted to bring that up again, just throwing it out there. Because before we, you know, make this the process, I am totally fine with making price the, the weighted thing, but I don't know that it's fair that we're going to tell the public, you know, "Here are the options," and then we get the prices. And then, if that, you know, substantially changed the weight, then, I don't know. I feel like they might not get a say. Maybe I should ask them. There are some of them here. We could literally ask them. Not that they're all representative here, but that's just my thought.
Any other questions? Councilmember Gannon?
Still digesting, because even this is a little, seems a little different in format than how when we talked last time, because obviously, we didn't have all the details yet. So, you know, in a perfect world, without having excessive meetings as far as the sequence of when the price would be disclosed for each of the proposals, I don't know where the best place is. I'm going to have to think about it a little bit more.
Anyone else? I have a question. Is this how you do it for other municipalities?
So, the pricing component, when you say that that is important as, as the highest level of importance, then, no, we'd be having a different conversation about the offer. But from our last work session and from conversations thus far, it sounds like the priority here is that you get the very best project possible. And, you know, we talked a bit about which is more important. You know, is it about the price or is it about getting the best plan? Is it about how much money you get out of the land? Or is it about getting the best project there? And so, part of the way that you do that, to make sure you get the best plan that's most consistent with your vision and your mission and compatible with your surrounding uses, without being deterred by a higher price offer, is by keeping that sealed and confidential. And it doesn't go in until the very end, and it's just a, a scoring element that happens. So, yes, we do this for other municipalities. We do this in other jurisdictions. But it comes down to what is most important to you. And I, I think you are all very much in agreement that getting the best uses, the best project, you know, that the land is developed most consistent with the vision and the mission, was your number one goal, that that carried the greatest amount of significance for all of you on how this proceeds, which is why we kept the price out of that mixture so as not to confuse the ultimate scoring. You don't want to get in and start scoring and say, "Oh, well, you know, for, for them wanting to only give us $1 million, you'd think they could throw a few more trees in there. I'm going to score lower on this." So, then you're starting to score based on the knowledge of the offer instead of on the quality of the plan in front of you and how consistent and compatible it is. You may not even do that consciously. These times, these types of things happen, and you're not even aware you're necessarily doing them. So, if it's something that you want to be aware of and you want to have the price disclosed to you, we can absolutely alter this process. The reason we've laid it out this way is because it sounded like that was your intent at our last conversation, was the most important thing is getting the very best project on that property.
So, I'd like to say something. Councilmember Gannon, I, I feel what you're saying about the price and the money, and I, and I kind of really agree with you. But after going to Owen's class with Felicia in the redevelopment of the CRA, of learning how CRA should be developed in your city and how it should be built, Owen made something that I, I think I mentioned this before in council meeting, that it's not the price, it's more, it's more of the project and what's going to be for the future of the citizens of the people. And that's one thing that stuck out at that class, because I even told Felicia, I said, "I, I'm, I want the money." You know, "We got to get the money back for the investment that, that we paid from our tax dollars." But Owen said, "Sometimes it's not always the money, it's the project." So, I just wanted to put that on the, on the, on the floor. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Let me, let me explain a little bit where I'm coming from. If I might ask the city manager a question. What did Simone want us to give to them to develop the property next door to City Hall? Do you recall?
I believe it was $2 million. For the parking spaces that we were going to commit to as part of the parking garage. Is that your recollection? So.
Okay. So, what I don't, my worst fear is that we have this great proposal, and the developer, we open that envelope, and it says, "You give us the land for free." Or, "City of Oldsmar, you pay us." I just want that to be completely out on the table, that you're all prepared to open that envelope and rank it based on a $0 exchange. To me, I would want to know ahead of time. I understand I'm in the minority, that's totally fine, but this is my opportunity to make that point.
Perfect. Anyone else, any comment? Vice Mayor?
Councilmember Gannon, I completely understand where you're coming from. And when I think about this process and what we're about to go through, let's say, worst-case scenario, we score one of these ranks as high as possible, and that's what we're going to go for. We open up, can't afford it, right? We still have the opportunity to make a decision to go to the second or the third. We're not locking ourselves in based upon this decision. The price is just the other factor. We just, I personally don't want the price impacting, we're getting X number of trees, to use your example. You know, that's, that's where I'm coming from. It's still going to be a part of this, the decision-making process that we need to decide on. It's just removing that influence from the first step to say, "This is what I feel is the best interest for the City of Oldsmar moving forward. This is the second, this is the third. How can we afford it?" Right? So, I, I appreciate where you're coming from, but I'm still, I would prefer to be sealed through the process.
Councilmember Graber, you have any comments?
Nothing from me. I think I was, the last time we discussed it, it was the same kind of way. It's like, what do you want in a house? And so, you say, "Oh, I want a pool, I want a fence, I want this, I want this, I want this. I want good schools, I want it to be here." You know, "I, I want this type of driveway, I want this, 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 and this." Okay, let's go look. Well, how much is it? It's like, okay, well, I can deal without the fence, or I can deal without the pool, because there's a community pool around the corner. It's those sorts of things where it's, if it's going to cloud, your judgment's going to impact how you're ranking these things in terms of aesthetics. I don't think that was our plan all along. The money's going to show up, and we're going to have to look at that and determine whether or not it's okay. As the Vice, as Vice Mayor just said, well, maybe we can't swing it. I mean, it's the same, it's the same kind of process. And I think with, you know, market conditions will dictate a lot of that. And, you know, it's, while we probably wouldn't be able to necessarily guess, if there's a crazy gap, and it's like, well, what, is this made out of gold? Like, I don't understand, why is this price so high? Like, why is this so extravagant? Well, we're getting a little bit less for this, but for such a, such a lower amount of money. And I don't think going in where it's, you know, "Well, these are the boxes. These are the things that we want to see." And the public's like, "Yeah, these are the same things that we want to see." Well, what if we open up the price, and price is perfect, and everything just coalesces and we're good? Nobody's judgment is clouded going into those decisions. And so, that's why I've been on that same bandwagon. Keep it closed, so we're all going in with the same, these are the components that we want to see downtown.
Okay.
Mayor, real quick.
Absolutely.
I, I think just to, as your kind of devil's advocate or worst-case scenario, I, I think, don't want to speak for anybody else, but I think ideally, we don't want to give away the farm or be in a position where we're shelling out money for a project. So, I think, even though we have the ability to score this and be more weighted or more interested in the concept and the plan, I think we're all, have the best interests of the city. Hard to say we're not going to just.
Right.
Even if there's a massive gap, it's still something, if you say, "Well, we want $10 million."
Right.
It's going to make you pause and say, "Hmm." And, and as what Councilmember Graber just said, it might check every single box, but if we're willing to give up a couple of boxes and find that happy medium, that's ultimately where the decision time comes in and puts us, you know, us in a tough spot at that point, if, if we come to a circumstance like that.
It's just, I guess I just don't feel like it's fair that the public doesn't get to participate in that part of it to a certain extent. But I, I see, you guys make very good points.
I thought, though, as far as the, the price goes in public knowledge of it, would it be possible that after that open house happens, if we are able to collect those people that, information that has participated, and once that price is disclosed, send out something to get, elicit their feedback at that point? If it's just like a one or two-question thing, to get that additional level of feedback? Would that be possible?
So, I mean, anything's possible, but the expectation here was that all of this would happen at, at that special meeting. So, in order for that to occur.
Oh, I understood.
You'd then have to have done your scoring and your ranking. The city staff would then have that.
It would have to be another meeting.
And then, you'd have to have another meeting so that they could then come and comment on the price. Now, with that said, one of the things that I think I do keep hearing is you're concerned that you may have this huge ask, where instead of offering you a price point to purchase the land, they may say, "We're offering you nothing, and we need you to give us $2 million in order for this to even pencil out." If there are financial limitations to what you can do, we can put that in here so that it's very clear. Because if there is a situation where you're like, "We might be able to contribute this, but only for a project that checks all of our boxes and is the perfect project, but we could not do anything more than that." So, it might help give you a little bit.
You're getting like right to the concern there. You're getting right in there now.
Because my, I think when we spoke before, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think in our last work session that we had, one of the topics that came up was, was there any interest in leveraging anything other than the land as part of this deal? And I thought we were generally in consensus that there wasn't a desire for the city to invest in the project other than the land being that tool that you're saying, "Offer us something for the land to get a project that's, you know, consistent with the vision and mission." Is there some ask that you would be comfortable with if they said, you know, "We can give you $2 million for the land, but we need you guys to kick in, you know, some amount"? Is there an ask that you would be comfortable with? Or is there no ask that you would be comfortable with? Because if there's a situation where that's the reality, then it would be best just to put that in the RFP, because that resolves this concern that Ms. Gannon has regarding a potential big ask being in that envelope.
And this is when I look over at our Director of Administrative Services and our City Manager. Because to me, there, there's not an ability to have a, a financial ask. I can't see us spending general fund dollars or CRA dollars on that. I may, I might be out of turn here, but to me, I don't see us, I would not vote for us.
Well, and you have, you have value in the land, so I can respect that, that thought process, yeah.
Go ahead, guys.
Anything else?
So, I have two things. One, on being someone that responds to RFPs, you limit me on the pricing. I can't provide the full value or the full scope of what you may be envisioning. And it may limit some of their ability to do that. I also, looking at this from, from my perspective, when I've been in these meetings before, on the other side of the RFP process, they're hearing price is important to us. They're hearing it from us today. They know that that's going to be a big factor in this. So, they're going to be smart about their answer and how they answer back to us. That's my first thing on the price. Going to the process here, I, I, I do agree that the public should have the ability to input on the price conversation. And if we're doing it at that special meeting, it's more of a, a process question. We go through, the scoring is ranked by the clerk, we open the envelopes. Are we going to open up to an open forum at that point for responses to, from the public to say, "I don't want you spending $5 million," or, or, I guess that's going to go towards a meeting agenda in the process?
So, I mean, I, I mean, I don't know that that's not possible, but the intent was for the pricing or the offer on the land, that if in fact you decide, "We don't want to have some big ask, and you want to put some sort of ceiling on that, that's fine." But the intent was that the price would not be something that was subjective. It is the price. So, whatever points can be awarded to the price, or whatever the weighted value is, whoever's price is the best, or whoever's envelope has the best deal in it, gets all of that. And then, it just follows sequentially proportionally from there down in terms of the points awarded. So, even somebody who doesn't have the best price offer, you know, that could still be a situation where if they've got the best plan, it's still going to rise to the top.
True.
So, the intent there was not for the pricing scoring to be in any way subjective. That's why in the, when we talk about it, we say, you're going to, we're then going to open the envelopes here. We'll read each of the envelopes for each of the proposals into the record. And then, it just gets added into the tabulation that's already going from the scoring you've already done on your, on your score ballots that each of you will have. And then, that just gets added into that spreadsheet, weighted out, and then that gives you a ranking, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
I have one more question, anyone else, before I go? Do one? Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
On, on the pricing, because I have never seen the pricing on this side, how complex does it usually get? We're going to give X, you give this, you give this. And how much time are we going to spend up here negotiating? What's the best deal based upon those answers? Like, how complex are those responses in pricing?
You're not negotiating at all. The intent is for that price to be the offer on the land, what they are offering to pay you for the land in order to develop on your, your land. That's the, that was the intent in framing it this way. Now, that offer may include an ask. They may say, "I can't offer you anything on the land if you want all this, and I might need you guys to kick in this amount in order for it to pencil out." Those are the type of things that you're going to see. But the intent is not to negotiate at that time. It's to score it, rank it, and then ask you all to approve that ranking. And then, we'll proceed from there into negotiations. Now, you also have the ability not to approve that ranking and to alter that ranking based on what you hear. But it, it won't be an opportunity to start negotiating and asking people, "Hey, okay, now bring your best and final offer." No, the, the prices have been read in, and that'll be it.
Okay. Anything else? So, one last question. First of all, I want to say thank you for explaining this through your, your PowerPoint slide. Explained it much better for me, understanding where we're going to be starting and how is it going to end. So, my last question is, step five, do we have a timeframe or a month? Are we talking a year from now?
No. The hope is, step five is happening pretty quickly. So, the expectation at the moment is that we will have an RFP for you all to review, the actual document that'll go out to the developers, that that'll be brought to you for consideration in early March, I believe. So, you'll be considering that and hopefully approving it then for it to go out. As soon as the proposals come back, that's why we tried to put some timeframes in here that, once those proposals are submitted and received at the city, within about a week, you want to have that open house situation where the public can come and see everything. And then, our team doesn't need more than a week or two, and we'll start as soon as we have the proposals, our evaluation. And then, we'll take into consideration the feedback from the open house, and we'll kick that back over to y'all. So, our hope is that within two, maybe three weeks tops from proposals coming in, we're handing them back to staff to share with all of you. And then, hopefully, you all have a week, maybe two weeks alone with the proposals and our feedback and the summary of the feedback from the open house to then do your own sort of deep dive into those proposals, prepare your questions for the interview and the Q&amp;A component. And then, we'll come back and do your special meeting. So, I mean, we're talking like a, a two-month, maybe, maybe 10-week period at most.
I don't know about you guys, I think this is very exciting.
So, hopefully, once the proposals are here, once, once we have them in staff's hands, it all starts going pretty quickly, actually, at that point, because we're just getting them all to you guys, which is the goal, right? To get everything into your hands so that you can start your process. And we want to give you adequate time to do that. We don't want you to feel rushed.
All right. So, I, I don't have a problem with the process that you've put in place in front of us. Does anyone make any changes or anything else? Or should we just move forward? Yep.
One question. In addition to those, in the upper section there of the presentation of proposals and Q&amp;A with each of the respondents, we have a means, because essentially, at that point, unless other people provide us with questions that they want to know, we're only going to be able to come up with what we want to know or what we've talked to people about. Can we add a component to where, again, submit things that could either be addressed ahead of time? You know, deadline, get your questions in by this point so that the, the respondents can.
And they can be, okay.
Can provide information for.
Would that be acceptable? I don't see why that would be an issue, if the public could ask questions ahead of time and then the, they could be answered on the record. I don't see why that would be an issue, if the public could ask questions ahead of time and then the, they could be answered on the record.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can certainly gather them, and then we can, um, give them to the developers so that when they come for the Q and A, they can include the questions in their presentation.
Right. Well, because, you know, only so many people will be able to or interested in attending the actual event ahead of time. But then when it comes time to being here and on the mic, they're, they're kind of front and center at that point, so.
Yeah, we can, we can fit in a small, like, hearing in mind for that.
Cool, okay.
And just, Owen was just mentioning, he said, just remind, just a reminder, you know, there's me five, theoretically, you're gonna get five responses back. And so, there's gonna be a, a day where if, if we go through all of these steps with five proposals, five presentations, five Q and As, and then also asking them to address public comments, all those things, can get to be a very long day. And I think we want to try to keep that special meeting very focused. Um, and, you know, task specific to avoid fatigue and general stress and anxiety associated with, you know, getting to the, the ranking and the end game. So, I think that is totally an option. We can certainly ask at the open house, that would probably be a great opportunity actually when we do the open house, to say, okay, if you can provide comments, that'd be great. And if you have any specific questions that you would like addressed by the developers or the, the proposers when they do their presentation, you know, please identify, you know, team one, I'd like to know, where is the bus stop gonna go, you know, whatever the case may be. And then we can provide those ahead of time, as Felicia was saying, to those individual teams and say, hey, you know, these are the questions the public had for team one and so on and so forth. And then they would be able to address those questions to you, because they'd ultimately be the ones answering them.
All right, thank you.
And they could do it as part of their presentation, that way it doesn't just keep extending the day.
It's not another session, yeah.
All right, perfect, thank you so much.
Okay. Any other questions before we move on to our next step? We're not done with steps yet.
Scoring.
Not yet, we have to get to step six first. So, from here, the, so this is just kind of now procedural. Because at this point, we're assuming the ranking has been approved, or some firm has been approved as the highest ranking. So, from here, city staff is gonna notify each developer of the ranking, and they're gonna request confirmation from that highest ranking firm that they actually wish to proceed with negotiations. Um, and if that is declined, and they say, you know what, no, we've decided we don't want to go forward with this, or whatever the case may be, then she'll continue that process down until she gets to one who does want to proceed with negotiations. Uh, once they've confirmed, um, then staff is gonna request their proof of financial capacity. And upon review and acceptance of that financial reference, they will proceed with engaging in negotiations with that developer. And then at that point, um, I think, you know, you guys have been through this before. So, you know, there's a negotiation period, there's agreements that have to be drafted and drawn up. And that's what will then ensue after that. So, that's kind of the end of the, um, the typical RFP portion of it, because then we're going directly into the negotiation steps, and that'll be handled by your city staff. And, um, of course, they'll come to you whenever they have issues. So, those are kind of the final steps that get you to starting those negotiations. So, the scoring part. So, we talked a bit at our last work session about how you wanted to prioritize these things. That the, you know, you wanted the plan to really take priority. That should be, you know, the content of that plan and how it's consistent with the mission and the vision and the content. You wanted that to be your highest weighted element. Um, we've also added the technical components here and the price. So, when we think about this in terms of what this means, the plan itself is basically four buckets that roll up into those percentages you saw a moment ago. Um, and basically, they have these individual elements for each of these buckets. Those come directly from the vision and mission exercise. So, when you see, you know, architectural scale and massing respective of street frontage, that comes directly from the vision and mission exercise for this property from, um, last fall. So, each of these that you see there, with the exception of the public open house feedback element, come directly from your vision, your vision and mission exercise. Um, so that's how each of these are broken down as the items that you will score. So, when you see this scoring matrix, this is rolled up into those buckets, right? So, for the plan, it's rolled up into those four buckets. When you actually score this, there will be a scoring for each of these bulleted items, because they each roll up into their bucket. Now, it's an equal distribution of weighted points below. So, if there's five items that go into appearance and aesthetic, each of those has a, the same distribution of weight for each of them, and the same for each of the subsequent. So, you will have each of these topics that you're actually awarding a score on. So. That was weird. There we go. All right, so then the next section that you're gonna score on is the technical component. So, just for clarity, when we say lead, we're talking about the individual who is going to be leading the team of that proposal. So, maybe that's an individual, maybe it's a firm with a couple of individuals. But ultimately, when we say the lead, we're talking about the person who signs the cover letter and who's actually got their name on everything, as they are gonna be the ones leading that team or that group effort. Um, so, the same here where these are broken down, and each of these carries equal weight. And then we have a separate technical component that's for the team as a whole. And these all carry, again, an equal weight that roll up into that team scoring category. So, that gets us back to the scoring matrix. Um, so each of you has a piece of paper in front of you, I believe. And the intent is, we put weights here that we're suggesting, we are not married to these. These are just suggestions, and if they're, if, if you're comfortable with them, that's fine, and we can proceed using these. The reason that you have a scoring sheet in front of you is so that if you'd like to deviate from these and alter the weights, you can do that. They will, the staff's gonna tabulate those. We're gonna read them into the record so that we know what everybody's looking for. We'll tabulate them and then carry an average, and then we'll use that average across all five of you as the actual weighting of these categories. And then, like I said, the, the subgroups under them will still be equally distributed in terms of their weight. Do you have any questions about how we arrived at any of these, or is there any?
I don't have any questions, any questions?
Just have one in terms of actual scoring for any of the subcategories. Is it just gonna be essentially a ranking of 1 through 5 for each item, and, or how, how does that break down?
It'll be a lot more points than that.
Okay.
The points will each be multiplied by a weighting factor. So, like, if, if you see a weight of 40%, the, the points that you award are weighted 40%. So, the way that we had laid out the matrix as a draft for your staff to start looking at was to allow you to score between 0 and 10 on every single category. And then however many of that 0 to 10 you award is multiplied by the weighting factor, and that gives you a weighted score for that element.
Okay, so will there be some, some guidance or definition on what qualifies as a 0 versus 10? Or step increment in between?
10 would be best, 0 would be worst.
Well, I, I know, but I'm saying like, for, for a specific one on there is like, are we gonna be specific as what qualifies it, or is that purely gonna be our interpretation?
That's gonna be y'all's interpretation. And the thing is, as long as you do that uniformly for all five, and you carry that same method with how you assign to all five, then any discrepancy or deviation from one of your fellow council members is gonna normalize across the five of them. So, well, you know, if, if maybe the mayor doesn't really like giving scores below 3, so most of his fall above that, but, you know, maybe Mr. Buckman prefers to, you know, drop some 1s and some 0s in places because he feels more comfortable using the lower values. All of that's gonna normalize, because he's not just gonna do that on one plan, he's gonna do it consistently across all of them. So, it, it ultimately averages across.
Cool, thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions about the scoring, do we want to let them go ahead and do their?
Yes, I think, um, it may be helpful to flip back to the.
Yeah.
Yeah, the first segment, first session. Yeah, yeah, thank you, yeah. All right, let's score it up.
I'm sorry, I forgot to tell you, your, uh, if you change the weights around from what we suggested, they still need to total to 100. I forgot to say that.
Hence the calculators?
Yes.
When the, the top, these categories that you have up here on our list, 18, 18, 16, and 3, that all adds up to 55. So, if you deviate from that, then you're changing the.
The total rank of the plan.
Less important than.
Exactly, so if those lower, then the amount that, of weight that the plan itself carries reduces as well.
Hey, Laura. Can you show us just briefly what goes into the lead and team buckets, just one more time?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. If I just don't skip past them.
Feel like I'm in school.
Silence.
This is actually really good.
And I, just a reminder, you know, the way that we kind of approach the plan and the technical split is, we know the plan's most important, that's why it's at 55%. But, you know, you want a really good team that can actually implement that plan and can bring it all the way through. So, that's why then the team configuration, qualifications, experience, all of that is also, um, consistent with that, you know, it's, it's not as high as the plan, but it's important that you get a good team that knows what they're doing and can bring that project forward.
Okay, take your time, Katie.
Just no decimals.
Tens of a percent.
12.25.
I'm not afraid of decimals, they don't scare me.
Oh.
Decimal away.
You good? All right, I think we're good. Do you want us to hand them to you, or?
Um, so I guess the question is, do you want them to read them aloud? All right, then Mayor, this is your show.
Okay.
Do you want to go down one?
Let's start with, uh, to the left, so Councilor Graber.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I changed a couple for appearance and aesthetics. I changed from 18 down to 16. Sense of place, I raised it from 18 to 20. Plan content, intended objective and functions, from 16 down to 14. Open house feedback, I raised from 3 to 5. Lead stayed at 25, team stayed at 15, and price stayed at 5.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, appearance and aesthetics from 18 to 20. Experience from 18 to 20. Plan content from 16 to 10. Open house from 3 to 5. Both lead and team are 20s. Price is 5. Unchanged.
Councilor Napp?
Thank you, Mayor. Appearance and aesthetics, 20. Experience, 20. Plan content, 10. Open house feedback, 5. Lead, 20. Team, 15. Price, 10.
Thank you, Councilor McGannon.
I left it 18, 18, 16, 3, 23, 13, and 9.
Thank you. Appearance, I have 20. 20. 15. For plan, open house, I have 5. Lead, I have 25. Team, I have 8. And price, I have 7. All right?
The Excel guru will give us the averages.
Good evening, everyone. Kara Zila for your local friendly finance administrator. I've been tallying away back there. Wes, if you don't mind, switching over to the input?
Oh, good, we can all do math.
There we go.
Hold your mic.
The calculators were great. The calculators were great.
Can you all see that all right?
Yep. Wow.
Zoom in a little bit.
I think we all had the same on the, oh, no, we had-
No two were the same. Across the board.
Garrett, just out of curiosity, that average isn't pulling in GAI, is it?
That's correct. It's not pulling in GAI.
Okay.
Interesting. Interesting.
So, deviation from GAI's original recommendation is not far.
Mm-hmm.
That right in line with what they recommended.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Great presentation, thank you.
All right, so now, we have our weighting. So, what will happen is, we will update the actual scoring matrix. And then, like I said, each of those, you know, individual scoring elements underneath each of these higher sort of subcategories, will then just be an even distribution of weight below that. So, see, told you I'm not afraid of decimals, because we've got a few.
Yep, I saw that.
But this, this is actually, this looks great. I think this is, you've awarded a little bit of extra attention to price, which I think is something we've heard today. So, from this point, Felicia, you're going to take over, start talking about development and agreement negotiation.
Hi, good evening, Felicia Donnelly. I, I wanted to take the opportunity to, to talk about the development agreement process. So, after the first set of steps, and then, after, we still have a long way to go. So, I wanted to, to make sure that, especially, I know that you all have heard this before, but really, to give the time for the public, again, for, you know, in the spirit of transparency, to help people understand that, that after a selection is made, and after we do our financial, you know, the due diligence, and see if the developer still wants to have our proposal, we still have a long way to go. So, our, the development, our development agreements are required for the site. They're subject to the land development code, section fourteen point seven. So, I'm just going to briefly talk about some of those steps. City council authorizes a city manager to negotiate. The city council decides to pursue negoti, the city council decides to pursue negotiations, instructs the city manager to proceed. The, the property owner submits the development proposal, which we'll have. This, the, the city manager and the staff reviews the development proposals. The city manager and staff meet and negotiates with the property owner regarding development and the terms and conditions. So, as you know, sometimes, that's a long process. It takes us a, a lot of iterations. When you see something as a concept plan, before, before it becomes part of the development agreement, it takes us going back and forth, and we're discussing all those details. Everything does, doesn't meet the code, doesn't meet all the new, you know, the coastal high hazard regulations. What are they going to do about stormwater? Is there a fire lane? So, that, that, that process alone takes us a while. The city manager determines that a tentative agreement regarding the terms and conditions has been reached or is not attainable, right? So, then, that's an update for me at a council meeting. I report the status of the negotiations to you all. The essential terms of the agreement are presented in outline form in council. So, we just went through this process with Devin Rushnell. The council reviews and votes to proceed with the creation of development agreement. We also have the three public hearings that were added to the code. So, you all authorize me to host three public hearings. We host those public hearings, we bring back- Oh, thank you, I'm sorry, Councilmember-
Right, the two public hearings, the open houses.
Yes, yes, open houses. It's not that late yet, open houses. And then, I, and then, we bring back the comment to you all. And then, then you say, city attorney, go draft the development agreement. Then, we, city attorney drafts the development agreement. And then, I transmit that to the planning board. And then, the planning, with the recommendations from the city manager. And then, the planning board reviews and makes a recommendation to council within thirty days. And then, the council conducts two public hearings, when the development agreement is executed. And then, within fourteen days, that agreement has to be recorded. So, just to remind everyone, it's, it's quite the process even after we get someone. And then, I also wanted, there's more to this process. So, the, the code requires consistent monitoring. The property owner submits a summary report every twelve months. We review all lands subject to the development agreement, no less than once a year to determine the compliance. Obviously, this is a bigger project, that would be more, of a more frequent basis. I make a report to council for the compliance. And if there's not compliance, the agreement is subject to termination with thirty days' notice to the property owner and a public hearing. So, just to kind of remind you all that, that there are more steps to come. You have any questions?
Yep, go ahead, yes.
Thank you, Mayor. The ones that you have in the different color, the contrast color, the red color, those are all publicly noticed meetings of city council or the planning board. And that didn't include the public open houses.
That's correct.
Okay, so I just, because I was looking, I was like, okay, more than half of these things are at public open houses and, and the, the city council meetings that are noticed. So, lots of opportunities for people to be involved.
Yeah, I think it's about seven, total, kind of, public hearings. All total, just, just for the development agreement process.
Right, that's after all of this ranking.
Any other questions?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Felicia.
All right. Thank you, I, I think that's it from, from our team, so.
Great job, everyone. Thank you so much for all your hard work, city staff. Owen and Laura, thank you for all your hard work, thank you. All right, anything else, any comments, anybody?
A-plus on the math.
Yeah.
Solid, yeah. Good job, everybody.
This was the best. All right. Dobranos, that means good night in Polish. This meeting is adjourned.